Welcome to the August 13, 2024, special called city council meeting. Consideration of adopting a resolution centering and punishing council members Jeff Helgason and Martin Missions for disorderly behavior and misconduct. I hereby move to adopt the resolution excluding resolving clause number eight. Do I have a second?
Second.
The resolution speaks for itself as far as I'm concerned. I counsel Vice Mayor Feraldi, do you have any to say? All right, is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Taylor?
Yes, I've talked to both Jeff and Marty and been talking to the mayor.
Can you speak louder or please?
I've been talking to both Jeff and Marty and the mayor for us to come up with a solution, a peaceful solution, one that everybody can agree to. And I've asked Jeff, Marty, and the mayor to ask our city officials, our attorney, and all the employees for forgiveness for our behavior. I include myself also because our behavior have not been that which become leaders. Our children are watching us. I get a call from Washington DC from my sister-in-law, they're watching us. Get a call from San Diego from my brother, they're watching us. They call us idiots. We need to put a stop to this. We need to, by the grace of God, ask for forgiveness. And I'm asking for forgiveness first because I should have stepped in and stopped this mess. Now, if we can apologize to one another and ask for forgiveness for everybody that's been hurt, we'll be okay. And promise each other that this insane stuff is going to stop. We need to stop it. The media love this.
Yes.
They love it. And we need to stop it. Can I get Brother Jeff? Would you like to apologize to the citizens and city council and Mayor Reed?
I'd like to apologize to anybody that I've offended. You know, I'm sorry that I fought too hard for the citizens. When I first ran, that's what I said I was going to do. And that's what I've done for 20 years. I fight for the taxpayers. And if I fight too hard for them, sometimes we get personalities get in the way. And I recognize that. Sometimes we get emotional on things that should be factual. So, and with that, I would like to appreciate that Councilmember Taylor for your godly wisdom. I would like to, for fear of if I quit speaking, I won't be allowed to speak again. So apparently I've got to keep on talking since I have the floor. So what I would like to say is, one, I did send an email this morning.
Excuse me?
So you still have the floor, good. So I haven't had the floor.
Are you sorry for the attitudes and all that's been displayed from the city council?
Absolutely. I mean, I wish we could work together better. I was so hopeful after we had five Republicans elected. That's why I had meetings or tried to get meetings at my house to where we could work together and come up with good solutions. I'm sorry if I offended folks. You know, it's not my intent. So you still have the floor, right?
You can have.
No, you still have the floor because I don't want to have the floor if I have to relinquish it. So it's still, the floor is still yours. I just answered your question.
Okay.
So are you satisfied with what has been said so far?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion for anyone else?
I would like to hear from Marty.
Larry? I really appreciate the initiative you're taking and I think you're right. Because when we're distracted by all this nonsense, we're not doing the business of the citizens. So I can absolutely apologize for being too forceful, trying too hard sometimes. And, you know, I'm sure there's probably folks out there that I've offended and it's never my intent to offend people. So I do apologize for that. I apologize for all of us. And then I also, you know, apologize to all of us up here for those of us up here that I've offended. One question I have for you is, you know, you were circulating a letter for us to sign with apologies on it.
Yeah.
And can you tell us who signed that letter so far?
You and Jeff has signed already.
Are there any blanks on it?
I need one more signature and that's from the mayor. And this would say that you three and I include myself going to stop this fight.
Yes.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you.
Going to stop it. You know, some of y'all take communion together in the same church. That's a dangerous thing. You're brothers and sisters in Christ. You shouldn't be backbiting and dogging one another. I'm sorry. I just get filled up with it.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
I'm looking at the camera. I'm speaking to all the folks watching at home. Are you satisfied? Because I'm not. I reached out four separate times to Councilman Helgason before the press conference that they egregiously called. Two phone calls to one number, one phone call to another, and a text message. Didn't get Jack back, not until 3:30 the next day when it said, oh, yes, I'd be happy to talk. It was my intent to say, this has got to stop, guys. I don't know what your plan is for tomorrow, but it's not going to be helpful. Please don't do it. Then convenient, Larry, I have.
This is for today going forward.
Larry, I have the floor.
Yes, I know you do.
And then yesterday I get a text conveniently from Jeff saying, are you able to talk? I genuinely considered it. I actually reached out to some of my friends and said, hey, what do you think I should do? Part of me wants to talk to Jeff. And 30 minutes later, I get a BS link to some concocted news article with people in this very room quoted in that article saying, by the way, I assume you've seen this already. I've been down this road with Jeff Helgason before, and I know what this is. It's nothing more than a submission tactic. I don't like it. This letter that Larry has produced, Larry, you're being played hard. I have owned what I've done wrong. I've lost my temper. I've said stuff that are not productive. I've owned that. I wear it on my back. And I apologize for it. I have apologized for it. Saying I apologize if I offend you is not an apology. Here's my view on this. It's quite simply this. If you think violating attorney-client privilege is appropriate, then vote against the resolution. It is often said by those in the legal community and the research I've looked into that attorney-client privilege is one of the most sacred components of our republic. It should not be violated. It should not be violated willfully, intentionally, or unintentionally. Unfortunately, in this case, it was violated by my guess and what I've seen documented three separate intentional times. Folks at home, I don't care if you're a Democrat, Republican, Independent, if you're transgender, straight, gay, I don't care. That's not what this is about. This is about, do you think violating attorney-client privilege is appropriate? Some folks might think so. I don't. I don't think it's appropriate. If there's some components of this resolution that y'all would like to tweak, I'm open to it. Larry, if there's things you don't like in there, let's talk about them. But we can't let this go unaddressed. It's interesting because even those in my own party say quite often, you know, they're going to be centering conservatives tomorrow. They're going to be going after their own tomorrow, which implies that I would presumably care more about the reputation of my own party than the city I represent. No dice. I care more about this city, the reputation of this body than I do anything else. I'm all ears. If I hear a genuine apology that I should not have violated and been in contempt of the will of council, and I'm sorry and it will not happen again, that's an apology. I yield back.
I agree. The apology, we're dealing with two separate issues here. So, Councilman Taylor, we're dealing with brothers and sisters in Christ. We're dealing with elected officials. Now, there's a part of that that intertwines, and then there's a part that's separate. The apology, as far as what has been done that brought us to the censure, is that two of our elected officials, as the vice mayor said, violated attorney-client privilege while doing that and arguing that they didn't, but they did. They defamed the character and the reputation of our city attorney numerous times, saying things that were just inaccurate about him and his job and what he had done, based on the narrative that they were trying to spin and tell our citizens, that are now in social media platforms, on the internet forever, attached to his name that he would have to defend and explain if he ever wanted another job. And their efforts were politically motivated. That's what is laid out in this resolution. So, an apology for violating the trust and the misuse of our attorney, the attorney-client privilege, and for attacking and defaming the character of our city attorney, that needs to be addressed, period. Because that's really what the essence of these centers are about and the motivation behind it. What's happened individually between all of us on and off the dais is a separate issue. This is not the church, this, this room, what we're doing as elected officials. But we are, some of us, depending on the belief systems up here, believers in Christ. And that's a different, that's a different conversation than what we're trying to do in an official capacity with this censure. Every organized body has a method in which they discipline people for misconduct. Schools discipline their students. Any business that has an HR department has a method in which they discipline people. And so do we, when you don't follow protocols, when you are outside the bounds of your duties. And that's what this is about today. It's been outlined in the censure. So people may not like that, but that's what we're doing. We've had countless citizens come to us for a long period of time, at least a year, asking us, why is it that certain council members just get to say whatever they want to say, do whatever they want to say, or do violate certain moral or ethical standards that they believe that they're doing, spew certain types of speech and so forth, and they get away with it. But yet they try to expect others in our city to follow some type of code or conduct, but then they're not, they're not bleeding by example. We have an obligation to the citizens, Republican or Democrat, young or old, the children that are watching, to show that we do hold our fellow council members to a standard, just like every other organized body tries to do as well. And to the point of the vice mayor, if we as a political party were to say, well, we're not going to do that to fellow, fill in the blank, then are we saying rules for thee and not for me? Is that the message that we want to sell? Is we're not going to do that for our party members? And if so, what type of message does that sell? Or do we say, no, even in this situation, we're going to hold everyone to the same standards and show that, yeah, we do have to send a message here? And that if we are, if that's the person that's being held to the disciplinary action, they accept it and then have an opportunity to say, I'm sorry, you're right, you shouldn't have done that. Have an opportunity to humble themselves and then move forward. There's ways that this can be handled for a learning opportunity for everybody watching and listening. As the parents in the room, when we, when we have to discipline our children out of a place of love, sometimes you have to explain to your child, this is going to stink because it's not fun to have to discipline, but I'm doing it because of a caring place. And you hope that you can get them to a good place in the end because you're doing it because you do care. And whether people want to believe this or not, sometimes these disciplinary actions, including this, is out of a place of caring. Because we care about our citizens, we care about those who are watching, we care about the integrity on this dais. And whether my fellow council members believe this or not, I actually do care about them. And I do care about their, I do care about their reputation in our community. And I do care about how we're all looked at. But corrective action does need to be taken in order for us to move forward. So while I appreciate Councilman Taylor's letter and the intent behind it, one is separate than what we're trying to do as the body. Any further discussion? Councilman Helgason?
Thank you. You know, this is a called special meeting. Normally, we have meetings that are for the benefits of the citizens. Normally, we have meetings, you know, a called special meeting is something that is done, you know, kind of very quickly. Normally, maybe because we have to do something expeditiously because we have a grant that needs to be acted upon, or we have a lawsuit that we need to stop the city attorney from, you know, fighting one side. Or if we have a, the other time that we had a special meeting years ago was when we had a polling place. Under the Voters Rights Act, there was a special called meeting that we had to call two council members because we had to do it in time for the Voters Rights Act. So you have those kinds of special meetings. This is nothing but division and divisiveness. As a special called meeting that says, it's not for public safety, for the safety of our citizens. It wasn't so we could improve education for our children. It wasn't so the fact that we could say, hey, we have this huge surplus, let's maybe give it back in a timely fashion. This has absolutely nothing to do with the citizens that we are elected to represent. You know, what's interesting, I sent an email this morning, or this afternoon, actually, because although I do appreciate the fact that there was the notice that there was going to be a special called meeting today at 2:00, I got that at Friday about, you know, almost 5:00 o'clock. The actual resolution with the language in here didn't come until last evening. Those of you that are up here that represent, or we were sworn in, were sworn to uphold the Constitution. Part of that Constitution says we have due process. That's why I sent this email today, because we had this long verbose resolution that does lots of things, some may be accurate, some I really question, and some are factually incorrect, some of them I really kind of question maybe the ethics of it. With that being the case, as somebody that's being accused of all these things, I do have a constitutional right of due process. Giving this to me last night at about 7:00 o'clock, I think anybody, Republican, Democrat, Independent, would say, we had people, you know, give their lives, to sacrifice their lives, their fortune, their sacred honor, to have a country, to have a Constitution that separates powers, that actually says, here's some rights people have. It's not just forfeited because of the fact that somebody, you know, forwarded a meme or a cartoon or something. What it is, is the fact that we have this due process. That's why I sent this. You know, again, the resolution, I got the official language last night. I do hope that all of you up here agree that I should be given the opportunity to prepare and present a comprehensive response. Shouldn't be given something last night and, you know, it's like saying, okay, I'm going to sue you and we're going to court next Thursday. For what? Well, I'll let you know Wednesday night. I probably should have the ability to have counsel. I should probably have the ability to present my case, to be able to meet with legal counsel. If that's not done, that should be a very chilling effect of everybody in here. You know, we hear some language that says, oh, well, we're for this and for that. That should be a chilling effect. The weaponization of this body, that's not a good thing. Give ample time. That's why I sent this email. You know, just in reading some of these things, I realized there's many factual, ethical issues that I think need to be addressed with legal counsel. There appears to be lots of items that are arbitrary and capricious in here. There's even items in here, you know, it is no secret that I have been, as the mayor pointed out, have been one of the sharpest critics of our city attorney. Because I don't like him? No. It's because I'm evaluating his performance, competence, ethics, bedside manner, all of these kinds of things that you evaluate an employee on. I've had Walter Irwin for almost 18 years, or how many every year? 17 years. I think every time I've given him a glowing report, I actually gave him the best report of any of the three members that we review, our city attorney, our city manager, and our clerk of counsel. Walter Irwin was a prince of a gentleman. He understood the law. He didn't come out of the blue and say, you're making a motion to lower the tax rate to 89 cents? That's illegal. Didn't have a resolution just last week or two weeks ago that was about money being presented and saying, oops, I forgot to put the amount of the money in that resolution. Lots of things that I had put in my critique, my employee evaluation, backed it up objectively, backed it up factually, wasn't no slanderous, it was looking at the actual results. And now in this resolution, I see the fact that he, one of his sharpest critics, is now somehow in this not able to weigh in on his performance evaluation retroactively. Find that strangely odd. You also can't decide on his pay. Also, can't decide on his pay, which I voted against last year when his pay was increased by $20,000 or $40,000. I thought, oh, my gosh, this is not a good thing. We need to actually maybe, you know, look at something that can actually make improvements. You know, interestingly enough, as I see this, and I see these conflicts of interest in the recorded phone call, the one recorded phone call that I did in my 20 years, was with the city attorney, when he called me on a Saturday. I wasn't sure about what this was going to be about. My gut told me, hopefully the Lord told me and gave me some wisdom and said, you know, you ought to record this. I'm glad I did. But in here, he puts things that this was immoral, deceptive, underhandedly. Never once did he say this couldn't be recorded. I think he knows Virginia law, and Virginia law is one-sided, where one person can record. Again, one time in my 20 years of recording calls. You know, but there's no mention of this when, you know, again, not trying to, not trying to be poking in the eye, but this happened before. All of you read about it, you read about that Chris Feraldi recorded and released a private phone conversation with our congressman. Okay? Well, there's no problem with that, but there's a problem with mine? And obviously, we know that this was legally obtained, this was actually a non-privileged phone call, where he specifically said in there, we need, want to get your opinion on defending Chris Feraldi, wanting to throw aside a memorandum of understanding and enjoin the electoral board, throw aside the memorandum of understanding and enjoin the registrar's office. I said, no, that's, and I'm glad I recorded that, because that actually, and so now, and in that actual recording, a little bit later in that conversation, you know, I know we talked about that with regarding the city attorney getting involved in private litigation and using city taxpayer resources to defend one side or the other, and I'm thankful that that didn't happen. With that being the case, in that conversation, he actually talked about his performance evaluation. He said, hey, you didn't rate me very well last time. Have I gotten any better? So he knows that I rated him poorly last year, he knows I rated him poorly again this year, and now what's he want to do in this resolution? We're not going to let you critique him. We're not going to let you decide on his pay. And now we just heard the mayor say, oh, my goodness, even these things could be bad for him to get another job. Well, that isn't my responsibility. I mean, I would, I gave the most glowing reports from Walter Irwin because, again, and some of us behind this dais haven't had that privilege of working with Walter. But Walter, even though you disagreed, he would disagree, not disagreeably, but he would say the other side, and he would present it not in an attack fashion. I heard Vice Mayor Feraldi a minute ago talk about that this is so important with regarding attorney-client privilege. Let me just talk, again, back to my email, this isn't a defense, this isn't my case because I haven't had the ability to meet with legal counsel. I'm sharing this because just in case somebody says, oh, man, we're going to vote on it anyway, without due process, that is a bad thing to do. So back to the city attorney, where he said this was immoral, it's deceptive, it's underhanded. Obviously, we know it's legal, Virginia law is pretty clear. But now on to the second element that the Vice Mayor mentioned as far as attorney-client privilege. And absolutely, I will apologize for any release of attorney-client privilege that I, and I have never done that. This one was different. This one was different because it was already released. Those of you who were at the meeting, we had a special meeting where the city attorney actually, July 9th, read two-thirds of the email that he marked attorney-client privilege. I'm not an attorney, which he definitely pointed out. But when you release part of a thing that you mark attorney-client privilege, you're now waiving privilege. Prior to that, we also heard the mayor on the morning line, releasing that email, releasing the fact, parts of it, didn't read the email by any means, nor did it, but read parts of those, saying that, oh, yeah, the city is not going to protect, defend Chris Feraldi. Oh, yeah, the city, though, does need to get involved because of the fact that elections are important, all of that. So you'd really look and say, this attorney-client privilege wasn't first-time released by me. That privilege was waived by several people behind this dais, most notably the city attorney, but even before, on July 9th, but even before that, Chris's campaign announcements said the same kind of thing, which is perfectly fine, saying that the city attorney is not defending him. Again, no problem with that. The problem that we had was the fact that the city attorney was willing to use and trying to use taxpayer resources to defend one person in a private litigation. Not a good thing. We tried to be transparent, we tried to be very open, and state, this isn't right. He said in a meeting a while ago that, oh, I could have called him. Well, we talked, we talked on Saturday, we talked about that. I tried to get him to say that this wasn't a good thing. Monday, he sends another email, or, excuse me, Saturday afternoon, 20 minutes after the phone call, he sends the email saying, hey, here's what we're going to do, and marks it attorney-client privilege. That's why we called the special meeting on Monday. We called it at 9:00 a.m. because it was timely. It wasn't calling a special meeting just so we could berate two members of council that maybe we disagree with, but it was actually there intentionally because it was needed timely. Back to the due process, and back to this attorney-client privilege. With due process, again, as the city attorney will very vehemently point out, that I'm not an attorney, nor do I pretend to be, but I can read some of the things of the law and have a kind of a brain. With that being the case, I need, and I think this council needs to follow due process, needs to follow our constitutionally protected rights of due process. I'm having to come up with this on my own, not having the ability to, because again, it came in about 7:00 o'clock last night, to now try to come up with a case and defend myself without being able to meet with legal counsel what this is all about. So that's why I sent this email today, saying that my due process and this resolution does nothing but create further division, and I appreciate the fact that some may think that it's a great thing, and you got to punish, or you got to do some things. But I think this does nothing for the benefits of our citizens. This does nothing but causes further division. I believe that what would be in order is for us to actually table this, keep it on the agenda, and do it at our next regularly scheduled meeting, so I can have time to actually meet with legal counsel of my own choosing, so I can actually have the ability to defend my good name, to defend my reputation, to defend my 20 years of service. And in the spirit of cooperation, I think that we can work together for the good of the citizens, and we can move forward once we actually cool the temperature. You know, I realize there's been hurt feelings over time, and, you know, this has never been done in my 20 years. Nobody has ever even thought about that. Nobody has said, oh, well, we can remove somebody, or we can, we didn't like what they said, so we can try to censure them, or we can, you know, and I first read this resolution as it begins, you know, when it says, because of our chaos, or not chaos, what was the word that was used? Our disorderly behavior and misconduct. And so with that, I'm thinking, disorderly behavior. I'm thinking about when we had a special called meeting where we didn't have a quorum, July 3rd. After that July 3rd, where we didn't have a quorum, so we couldn't actually have business, Councilmember Missions and I got out from behind this dais because we didn't want to make it look like it was an act of the city, because we didn't have a quorum, so we didn't have a meeting. We went down, because all the press were here, and we talked to the press. And now, let me just ask you about disorderly. Was that disorderly when somebody was standing over there on the other side of the room saying, shut off the press? I hate to even say that, because now I'm going to be recorded as saying, shut off the press. I should go quotes, air quotes, how about that? When somebody, the mayor said, you know, get out, you must all leave the room, citizens, you can't be here, even though we had the room booked from 4:00 to 5:00? Where after every council meeting, council members for the last 30 years, I know Mr. Whitehead that's been covering this for years, and some of you newer reporters, you talked to council members in the will, same place where we talked to the press that day about the issues, because we didn't have a quorum, we didn't have a meeting, but there are issues that still need to be addressed. And we addressed those openly, transparently, we addressed them without malice, without contentiousness, without meanness, but stating the facts. Now, if people don't like the facts, that, I'm sorry, but we presented it that way. But now, again, back to the disorderly. We had somebody in the back of the room shouting, waste, fraud, and abuse, so much so that the press said, hey, can we do this again? Because we couldn't even hear you, with a person in the back of the room yelling waste, fraud, and abuse repeatedly, and somebody in the front of the room yelling, get out of the chambers, shut off the press, I need a police officer in here now, again, violating some pretty important issues. You know, I appreciate our police officers, I appreciate that I was just endorsed again by the Police Benevolent Association. I realize that I am not a person that is going to boss them around. I appreciate the fact that there are public safety officers. I'm not going to say, officers, get in here and arrest these citizens, throw out the cameramen, throw out the reporters, throw out the citizens, throw out the council members. They don't work for me, they work for the city manager. With that, I don't try to boss them around, and I know somebody got censured for saying something, and this censure is talking about, you shouldn't talk to one of your employees that directly reports to you. The city attorney directly reports to city council. That's one of the people that we hire. We hire three people, the city attorney, the clerk of council, and our city manager. Those are our three employees. It's not our men and women in blue, it's not our deputy, it's not our other folks. So we have no say over them. You know, you can ask them kindly if they could help, but back to the disorderly that this was talking about, the disorderly conduct. Now, our disorderly behavior, I'm trying to think, and I remember that, I'm thankful that there's videos presented, reached far and wide, where we're standing up there, getting yelled at, and yelled, and yelling going on, we stood up there and still had our press conversation, because it was important for transparency, for openness. Now, if council is going to say, well, doesn't matter about your due process, doesn't matter about facts, because we want to do this anyway, I don't think that's a good thing. You know, this, again, just came out last night, got it at about 7:00 last night, wasn't able to read it right then, just had my, just got back from a family vacation in Minnesota, just had my wedding anniversary. When I got the email, we were trying to celebrate, I got an email saying, hey, got a special meeting, and you are the butt of the special meeting. So with that, I received this stuff in the mail last night, tried to present an email this morning, or by the time I got it, it was about 12:00, to say that I do hope, and I humbly request, that this item be deferred until our next regularly scheduled meeting, September 10th. If you would like to do as Councilmember Taylor suggested, which I think would be very prudent, and that is to deny this, that would be great, and work it out privately like adults should. Or what we could do, I'm sorry, that was bad, I apologize for that, that wasn't a good thing. Thank you for laughing, Chris. I mean, that wasn't a good thing. I should, again, I'm trying to not be, I'm not, I'm trying to specifically not be, you know, throwing in, you know, bombs, and that, so I apologize for that, I shouldn't have said that. Where we could actually think it through, where we could actually talk about it, as Councilmember Feraldi said, I, he reached out to me, I didn't get it till 3:00 that afternoon, because we did have the press briefing. I did reach out and said, I'll be happy and delighted to talk with you. I reached out again yesterday, as he said, to say, I would be happy to talk to you about this. This was even before I saw this resolution of all these different items in here. And so, again, back to the due process, back to the ability to defend myself, I do humbly ask that you defer this until September 10th. You know, with that being the case, you know, I realize this is, you know, it's political, has no thing whatsoever, having it the 10th may even be more beneficial for you if you'd like to slap me closer to an election time, or you would like to take it out totally. But again, due process is important, and I do hope, and again, I'm going to close with this, that I do humbly request that this item be deferred until our next regularly scheduled meeting, September 10th, and I will make that as a substitute motion.
Do I have a second?
I have nothing else to add to my motion, but thank you.
So much. So first, Madam Clerk, if you can please make note for the record, a disclosure that I'm not waiving my due process rights by participating in these deliberations. I've got some questions. I don't know, Madam Mayor, if you'd be willing to answer any questions, or is that something you're willing to do, or you're not willing to do that?
Just speak to your second, please.
Okay. Well, I may have some questions for the city attorney as well, but the primary question that I have is, who prepared the resolution? Because I have some serious concerns about the resolution, typically, our resolutions are prepared by the city attorney, and then we act on them. So in this resolution, it says in paragraph 7, Councilman Helgeson and Councilman Missions are barred from submitting an annual review and discussing compensation for the city attorney for the period of July 1, 2023, through December 31, 2024. So that's a wide-ranging bar on discussion. That's basically saying that when I leave here, I can't discuss the city attorney's salary. Well, I'll have you know, because it's public record, if you're to do a FOIA request in the previous fiscal year and the next fiscal year, there was a massive salary increase last year. And, you know, that's something to think about, because at the 4:00 work session, we have on the docket, going into closed session to discuss the performance of the city attorney. So now, think about that for a second. If the city attorney prepared this resolution, where he's retroactively erasing our performance evaluations, and, you know, you can't speak in here, and I can't engage with you guys, but, you know, I would, it'd be interesting to see if there were a show of hands, how many people get a performance evaluation, or have got a performance evaluation in their times, because you typically don't get to retroactively remove one or another. And I think that's kind of interesting. So what this does is it effectively bars myself and Councilmember Helgeson from having any influence whatsoever into his performance evaluation that's getting ready to be done in closed session. And any salary negotiations that may be done in closed session if that ends up being a part of it. ends up being a part of it. So they're doing that in advance. So preemptively, here we are, you know, Councilmember Helgeson mentioned, normally special meetings are done quickly because there's something that needs to be addressed expeditiously. Well, expeditiously, what needs to be addressed is the prevention of our performance evaluations from becoming record for the city attorney, and our voice as your representatives in how your tax dollars are used in his compensation package. That is what's happening.
I will speak to that and answer that question.
So you will answer the question of who prepared the resolution?
Yes. I will answer, I will tell you that the city attorney did not.
Okay, who prepared the resolution?
An outside counsel.
All right. So we'll have this be known that I'm submitting a FOIA request right now for any correspondence related to the preparation of this resolution with outside counsel. Previously, when I was censured on November 28th last year, well, in August, I submitted a performance evaluation that's about to get erased by this resolution, right? And then on September 11th, Mr. Friedman emailed a Mr. Waddell down at a law firm in Salem regarding the preparation of a resolution to censure me. Now, so here's what's interesting about that. So September 11th is when that first email shot across, and I'll be happy to publish all those documents online this evening. I got them in a FOIA request. September 11th, Mr. Friedman, about two weeks after I submit my performance evaluation, sends an email down to a law firm in Salem, and what I know is that it was responsive to a request for records pertaining to the preparation of the resolution to censure me. So that was the first email that I got that was responsive to that. Well, you know, everybody makes a big deal about, or not everybody, but the press and Chris Feraldi and Stephanie Reed and some other folks made a huge deal about, you know, the Liberty University students spying on Chris Feraldi at a public event in a public Secret recorded phone call by Chris Feraldi from Congressman Good, which I'm sure he's going to justify later. But aside from that, so everybody makes a big deal about that piece of it, right? Well, here's the thing that's interesting. On September 11th, that phone call hadn't even happened yet. So two weeks after I submit my performance evaluation for the city attorney, the city attorney initiates an email with an outside counsel, outside firm, to do that. And then I get censured for something that hadn't even happened yet. And the other thing that's interesting is you see the news articles that fly back and forth before there's an opportunity for them to actually get the teeth to make it worthy of a censure. So Mr. Friedman actually sent a bunch of news articles to Mr. Waddell, and then, excuse me, not Mr. Waddell, Mr. Gwynn, and then the one thing, the one statement that wasn't really redacted in there, after he sent all the news articles that were part of the emails and letters that were leaked in some way, shape, or form, which are public records, that's fine, the one statement that came back after all the news articles were submitted was, "I'd be happy to assist." So Mr. Friedman, who's supposed to be working for the governing body, working for the city of Lynchburg, is instrumental in facilitating the censure and the discipline of your elected representatives and providing no assistance or legal support to them to defend themselves. Now, let me tell you something. There's a lot of people in the city that rely on public defenders, that rely on organizations like Legal Aid, right? Wouldn't that be screwed up if those people were just hung out to dry? You've got to go pay for some four- or five-figure attorney, right? So essentially, that's what they're doing when they come after myself and Councilmember Helgeson, completely violating our due process rights, not giving us any opportunity to look into things. So with that being said, some more questions that I have are, you know, we have the ability in both state code and the charter to investigate, to find facts, to get to the bottom of things, right? Just like the previous politically motivated censure, right, of me in November 28th. It's interesting because it talks about I interfered in personnel issues. Well, let me tell you about that quote-unquote interference in personnel issues. Myself and Councilmember Helgeson had a meeting with the city manager and the city attorney about a police lieutenant who has served this city valiantly for years, who was getting ready to be fired, completely unjustly, policies being violated. They fired him. He went through the grievance procedures. In the first step of the process, it was discovered they did violate policy, and he got his job restored, all rank, all time. There were officers that came forward on that person's behalf. And you know what? I will take a censure every day of the week fighting for the people that put their lives in harm's way for this city. That's what I did then, and with this, I'm fighting for the citizens, I'm fighting for the taxpayers, I'll do it then, too. So it's kind of profound. This is an exercise of power, raw power. That's what it is, right? Raw power. The presiding officer has the ability to set the agenda, right? And I find it funny, my friend Chris over here talked about how attorney-client privilege is such a fundamental piece of our republic, right? This is the United States Constitution. Due process is in it. Attorney-client privilege is not. Okay? So, you know, think what you want to think about that. With, with that being said, if you had a unpolitically motivated majority here, they would investigate, they would get to the facts. Now unfortunately, they don't want to get to the bottom of things. They don't want to get to the facts. It's no secret that the mayor supports the opponent of Jeff Helgeson. She's got Facebook posts stating as such, I've got them printed out. Is this election interference? That's a question that I have. Is it election interference? If so, that would be absolutely terrible. Absolutely terrible. You know, one of the things that's interesting in our rules of procedure, right? And this is where there's a misconception about how business is conducted in a legislative The presiding officer may adjourn without the council's vote or appeal in an emergency, and he or she may also call a brief recess without a vote at any time when necessary to clear the air and thus reduce friction among council members. What we have here is very simple. We have a majority that wants all of council to say what the majority thinks. That's not how it works in America. The other thing that our rules of procedure say is that it's to enable the council to transact business fully, expeditiously, and efficiently while affording every opportunity to citizens to witness the operations of government. You know what? When Mr. Friedman called around and was whipping votes on whether or not to intervene on behalf of Chris Feraldi in his lawsuit related to his election, that was not business being conducted where citizens were able to witness the operations of government. It was not. So yes, I will always fight for you to be able to witness the operations of government. It also says that we need to protect the rights of each individual council member. Well, I also sent Mayor Reed an email earlier, raising the same concerns, raising concerns about due process, raising concerns about having time to actually look at this, understand what it means, get legal guidance on this, speak with an attorney, meet with an attorney, right, and determine how to proceed. Never got a response to that email. I'll make sure that email's available to the press as well, with the timestamp. The, just what we see here is, you know, quite frankly, it's an abuse of power. That's what it is. Just because you can do something doesn't mean you should do it. Now, I commend Councilmember Taylor because he is the first person that I've seen up here that's embodied number C, or letter C, under the purpose of the rules of procedure, to preserve a spirit of cooperation among council members. Councilmember Taylor is the first one to try to do that, and I appreciate that, and I thank you for that. And it's unfortunate that this resolution also penalizes Councilmember Taylor. And that's what happens when you outsource something to a law firm that doesn't understand the details, and then it doesn't get properly proofread. But they're actually knocking you down and seeing you already too, brother. I don't know if you knew that or not. So with that being said, I'm also curious, Madam Mayor, because you lodged a claim of defamation here in your opening comments. Can you speak specifically to what that was? Because you actually made a claim that we defamed someone. So what specific statement was defamatory? Are you able to answer that? Or are you just alleging that we made defamatory statements without actually having a statement to address?
You have the floor to speak. Go ahead and address your comments.
Well, I think we know the answer to that. I'll be providing these to the clerk that she can put in the official record, but these are transcripts. One is from a WLNI audio interview of Mayor Reed on the morning of July 3, 2024, and I'll just kind of highlight some of the things that she said. I think she's, let's see. Vice Mayor Feraldi is not being represented by our city attorney. Well, when you look at the email where we are told that we broke attorney-client privilege, which, there's parts that aren't redacted, right? That's this one, right? That's where he says, "That was previously attorney-client privilege, that the city wasn't defending Vice Mayor Feraldi." Something else that was stated, "As our opinion about the city entering into some type of interest because the city pays for the elections, so we have an interest in anything having to do with city elections." That was his question, was kind of in general, right? "This lawsuit's not a private matter." "Financial resources are not properly expended or discarded." Oh, I'm reading the wrong part, hold on. I got to read the unredacted part. So that's in the unredacted part. Again, something else that was in that attorney-client privilege email that the mayor stated, right? That we pay for them. So the first person to actually break attorney-client privilege was Mayor Reed on WLNI the morning of July 3. And then in the meeting, the special meeting that actually happened on July 9, right, here's Mr. Friedman's remarks. And I want to point out that I specifically asked because I saw that he had a script in front of him, right, that he was reading off of with his prepared remarks. And when he was reading that script, I asked for that script to be entered into the official record, and that was denied. Denied, okay? And he wanted to address some claims. City's not representing Vice Mayor Feraldi. That was part of what was attorney-client privilege, so that's no longer attorney-client privilege when he said it. He said that myself and Councilmember Helgeson are not attorneys. That is accurate, right? Right in here. "Jeff, you are not an attorney and not qualified to interpret statute litigation events or the like." Same thing. "Law suit is strictly a private matter." "Law suit is strictly a private matter between two persons," is the claim that was made, that Helgeson made, right? He respectfully disagrees. And here, "The lawsuit is not a private matter involving only two individuals," as Jeff publicly stated. Same thing. It's going to disenfranchise thousands of voters. He says it right over here, right? So he sat there. Now, think about that for a second. I'm not going to go through all this, I'll make sure that this stuff's available, but, you know, here's what people actually said. It is exactly what was underneath the redactions here, okay? And they want to grandstand and gaslight all of you and turn this into something political when it's not. There's no spirit of cooperation being displayed by Mayor Reed or Vice Mayor Feraldi. They don't have any interest in that. They have interest in compliance. It's been that way since day one. And they have a problem that some of us who were also elected by the citizens aren't willing to just comply and, quote-unquote, "Kiss the ring," as Chris Feraldi always likes to say, right? But I'm not the one wearing a Freemason ring, that's Chris Feraldi.
I'm wearing a college ring.
You usually wear it.
No, I don't. What are you talking about? Those two are, you're a piece of work.
So with that being said, you know, I just think that it's very interesting that this is what's happening. Am I surprised? Not surprised. Not surprised when you see things like, you know, and I apologize to those of you in the room that actually had the guts to talk to reporters on these two articles that came out over the weekend. The first one was Lynchburg mayor shuts down critics exerts chilling effect on free speech amid controversy, right? National news. I absolutely apologize to those of you for the disingenuous comments made by my peer over here that it was no big deal, right? There's a lot of people that I've heard from behind the scenes that are terrified about coming forward against Stephanie Reed and Chris Feraldi. Absolutely terrified. You would not understand the resistance that you run into door-knocking in normal neighborhoods, normal normal working-class neighborhoods for people to support, other than Chris Feraldi or Stephanie Reed. And then the second one, embattled Lynchburg mayor faces more allegations of bullying verbally abusing constituents, right? You know, I apologize to those of you that are in the room that are sourcing that article that had the guts to come forward, because I know that's not easy, because you're looking at, you know, the power of government here. I mean, look at what they're doing. Jeff has been on city council for 20 years, five terms consecutively. Five terms consecutively. There's nobody that's fought for taxpayers harder than Jeff, right? And then to get removed from the finance chair position and replaced by somebody that didn't even know the school budget numbers on the radio, right? To reduce him to the most junior member of council is petty. It's petty. This is like middle-school, high-school, girls' locker-room pettiness stuff. That's what this is. There's nothing about this that has anything to do with policy, right? Policy. And, you know, when we're wasting our time being distracted on these political witch-hunts being carried out by the mayor, then unfortunately, you know, we're not spending that time on doing the business for the citizens. And it's interesting, too, because they carefully line up these whereas clauses on here, right, to make it look like we released something after the vote, but they put them out of order because they're trying to make it look like, you know, it happened in a different way. You know, I hope somebody proofread this. I have, like I said, grave concerns about the conflicts of interests. You know, we can't have... You know, the city attorney's office is responsible for the resolutions that come before us. It's a matter of outside counsel did it. It's in his job description. It's in city code, right? So if he didn't review it, then he wasn't doing his job. And for that to be the case, you know, and then for him to also be the parliamentarian in this meeting and not recuse himself is also... And no disclosure whatsoever that this is going to affect who can negotiate on any salary and benefit changes for him. I am just deeply concerned that we are setting the city up for liability, that we are setting individuals in here up for liability related to the Conflicts of Interest Act, the Virginia State and Local Government Conflicts of Interest Act, which is the main reason why I support and seconded Councilmember Helgeson's motion. Because I do think, you know, if they want to go ahead and carry out this censure against us, you know, take our pay, try to get us to go to taxpayer-funded training where they have people that support policies that want to restrict your Second Amendment rights, no, not doing that. Sorry. Not going to waste your money on organizations that are pro-government, pro-bureaucracy, and anti-citizen, and anti-liberty. Not doing it, right? And one thing that I do think is interesting is they changed some language in here about how they would collect the fine. Because I got that wrong the first time. And, you know, I am curious about... One question I have about paragraph number nine is empowered to take any necessary steps for future communications with Councilman Helgeson and Missions. What are any necessary steps, Mayor Reed? Do you have any idea what that means? Okay. I'll take that as a no. So with that being said, I do think that it would be prudent to table this until the next meeting so that everybody has ample opportunity to have attorneys look at it. Obviously, the city side, wherever this came from, whoever initiated it, and we'll get a chance to get the FOIA request back by then, too, which would be great to see, was it the city attorney that initiated this resolution of censure? Because he did send an email to all of us saying that, you know, censure or removal would be in order for releasing that phone call, right? So one person is telling the governing body up here that they can disenfranchise all your votes, but we're not allowed to weigh in on his performance evaluation. We're not allowed to weigh in on his compensation package, according to this. So in addition to that, you know, I think that there's facts to be discovered regarding this attorney-client privilege. And, you know, I think that when people are going to lodge arbitrary and capricious claims against folks, anytime government lobbed an arbitrary or capricious claim against you, you should have an opportunity to meet with legal counsel and be able to defend yourself. Every time. Every time. But apparently, when Stephanie Reed and Chris Feraldi set the agenda, that's not the case. So I will be supporting the motion to table this. I do think that we need to have some more folks look on this, and I would hate to see how much money we spent with an outside law firm if this ends up being totally, you know, egregiously wrong as far as, you know, being consistent with law, right? There are concerns that I have about how this is impacted by state code and other things. And then in addition to that, it also needs to be looked over again because Councilmember Taylor is senior on this council to Mayor Reed because she was sworn in a day later. So that's all I have. I'll be supporting this motion. So it's kind of unfortunate they penalized Councilmember Taylor on this.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
It'd be an interesting dig into council's records to find that I'm pretty sure two members of council walked out of closed session, and thus the minutes may reflect that Missions and Helgeson were not present because they decided to leave for whatever reason. I can't go into that because that is closed session. But the minutes reflect that they were not there to certify the closed meeting because they left a year ago in August. They decided to leave. They didn't want to be a part of the discussion with the city attorney's review. They declined to do it. So if y'all want to be a part of the conversation, maybe you should express an interest in doing so. I would like to point out, we have been talking... Excuse me. You have been talking for nearly an hour.
Yes.
And I humbly submitted at the foreground, I just want an apology, that what was done was wrong. It won't happen again.
No, you're not.
And move on. And I'm not going to listen to anyone telling me what I do not want and what I do want. What I know is that it was wrong. And I'm looking at all these folks in this room right now who worked so dang hard with these two to cause chaos in this city.
No.
All.
No.
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 Right.
I'm a mess.
Keep it up.
I'm a mess.
Keep it up.
I'm a mess.
Keep it up.
Why?
Keep it up, guys. I'm telling you, I don't look at you and think anything... Oh, good grief. The only weasels up here are the ones who are going to just take this to court anyway. We know that's what they do best.
Throw up.
Throw up.
You're voting on it.
Vote.
Let's vote. Let's do it.
Let's vote.
Let's do it.
Madam Mayor.
And also, I have the floor still. I'd like to point out, anyway, these fines are just going to be paid by two men in this room, anyway. I see them in here right now, the biggest donors in Lynchburg. They're just going to pay it off for them. And also, you guys could go to any organization you want to. It's not just some organization that you have to go to. Go to any of them. Find the appropriate training, go to it, and you're done. It doesn't have to be VML. It doesn't have to be First Cities.
Get your charges.
Madam Mayor.
I'm not finished. I'm not finished, and I would appreciate some decorum in this room. This is what we have to do. We've got to put an end to this. We've tried multiple ways to do so, and we just listened for an hour-plus to defending themselves over what they've done. Folks, this whole claim over due process, let's consider it for a moment. Due process in a legal setting? This is a legislative body. We govern our own. A clear distinction from the executive branch. Could we please vote on the substitute motion? Vote on the primary motion, and then conduct the business of the city.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to respond to the request that Vice Mayor Feraldi made.
No, I'm not acknowledging you right now on the floor because I'd like to see if anything else... Yes, Councilwoman Dolan?
May I just say something?
Yes.
Let's see, we've been here for an hour and 16 minutes, and I really am experiencing PTSD and suffering over the reliving the last 20 months of a dysfunctional council. And all I want to say is enough is enough. I just think that the divisive behaviors that we've experienced over the new majority, this council is truly dysfunctional and really getting in the way of our doing business and our governing in this city. And you can sit up here and apologize, but then you turn right around. I've watched it the last hour and 16 minutes, and your behaviors are all the same. So I don't believe anything's going to change. I think that I would support the resolution for this reason. Hopefully, people will wake up and decide that their behaviors have been really bad for this council. I just... I sit here silently watching this, and I am in absolute utter disbelief. And I can tell you, this does involve the citizen. This does affect the citizens. I can go... I can't go anywhere, and I am not stopped by Republicans, Democrats, independents, or whatever, looking at me and saying, why can't council do something about the members of the city council that are so disruptive? So I'm telling you, something has to change because this city is really suffering as a result of it, is what I want to say.
Dr. Wilder?
So before we vote on the substitute motion, I'll just say this as I'm sitting here listening to all this. You know, I am so sorry that Councilman Taylor has been put into the middle of this and I feel like used in some way. Because I really feel like you have been, Councilman Taylor, because I know your intent and I know your heart, and you and I talk a lot about all kinds of things that have nothing to do with what's going on up here. I had a conversation with you earlier today about people's hearts and the hope and the prayer that... I'm trying to see. Okay, there you are. The hope that genuine hearts would be shown up here so that when we had to call the vote, maybe what was necessary wouldn't necessarily be necessary. But unfortunately, I haven't seen that. I haven't seen genuine repentance up here as far as apology for the actual acts that brought us to this place.
We just want to refuse to apologize.
I haven't seen... I haven't seen that. I've seen mudslinging and lying and intentions to...
What's the why, Madam?
Throw other things...
What's the why, Madam?
Throw other things...
Fire!
Throw other people under the bus rather than just address the behaviors that we're supposed to be here talking about. And that doesn't make things better. It makes things more challenging. So those are my concerns, and that's what I had, you know, told you I was hoping that we could get to and just address this. But then a whole bunch of other things unrelated have come up, deflection tactics and so forth, and that's what happens. And so, you know, y'all can say what you want to say. That's fine.
We will.
All my life I have been faithful. All my life I have been so, so good.
Okay, let's take a vote, please, for the substitute motion, please.
Madam Mayor, I'd like an opportunity to respond to the claims you made and the request of Vice Mayor Feraldi.
I wasn't directing anything towards you, Councilman Missions, and I would like to call the vote for the substitute motion right now, please.
No.
No.
Councilmember Helgeson?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
No.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
No.
Mayor Reed?
No.
The motion fails.
Okay, now I'd like to call a vote for the main motion, which is...
I haven't had a chance to speak to the main motion yet, Madam Mayor.
Oh, wow. I would like to call...
Madam Mayor? I haven't had a chance to speak to the point of order.
What's your point of order, Councilmember?
My point of order is that I haven't had an opportunity to speak to the main motion, Mr. Friedman, and I believe that the rules of procedure actually give council members a right to speak to the motion before voting on it.
All right.
Reasons why he didn't believe that we should have the censure begin with...
That's not your interpretation. I'm talking to the attorney, Madam Mayor. It's the attorney's interpretation. You don't live inside my mind.
The substitute motion, what is called...
I understand. I understand the question. Madam Mayor, what I would offer in your...
Quiet, please.
Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. What I would offer is while Councilmembers Helgeson and Missions have made various points as part of their substitute motion, given the nature of the resolution that's on the table and the primary motion being back, especially with claims of wanting due process and being able to be heard, so long as they have an opportunity to be heard within the rules of procedure, I think it's fair to allow all members, again, to speak to the censure now that it's on the table.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Well, due to the interest of the time, because we've been going so long, that I would like to, at this point, acknowledge our time limit of 30 minutes total for debate because we do have a 4 o'clock work session.
I think that would be acceptable.
So total for everyone to speak so I can call the vote, that means everyone speaking, maximum of 30 minutes. Go ahead.
All right. So let me get back to my notes here. So I have some questions. Feel free to answer them, attorney, mayor. If you don't answer them, that's fine, too. But, you know, on page one, in the first paragraph, section 37 in the city charter, it says that members of council have the profound duty of making decisions in the best interest of the city. So I'm not disagreeing with that statement, but does the section say we have the duty to act in the best interest of the city? The language is not in the charter, is it? I say that because what's in the best interest of the city is most often the subject of our public debate and disagreement, right? So like I said earlier, you know, part of the process is the debate, and it's pretty clear what's happening up here is, you know, it looks like they might be trying to squash debate using retaliatory, threatening, and bullying tactics. So again, you know, the closed session. We could have had a closed session to discuss these issues with the city attorney, and that never happened. There was just phone calls that went around, right? That skirted the whole deliberative process, right? We didn't get an opportunity to agree or disagree on things. We should have been able to do that. So next, you know, it talks about the charter being able to address disorderly behavior, misconduct. So what definition of disorderly behavior are we using here? So what definition of disorderly behavior are we using here? What definition of misconduct are we using here? Where are we getting those definitions from? You know, if government's going to do things, we're just going to make claims, right? You know, I know Chris made his statement about legislative versus executive, right? Well, probably should get the legislative part, you know, to the point where we know what it's saying or where it's coming from. Because we run into a lot of issues when we can't interpret what's being said. And the next question that I have is, you go to paragraph nine on page three. Whereas while the legality of the grievances outlined in this resolution may or may not be unlawful, they among others have been a further detriment to the public trust and reputation of the city of Lynchburg in this council, right? I think we talked about this. Recording of phone calls, one participant's totally illegal, right? It's not immoral. So we have that recorded phone call. Mr. Friedman never asserted attorney-client privilege in that call. All right. So in addition to that, when we look at, it says, whereas without authorization from a majority vote of the council on July 9th, Carden Lewis reported that Councilman Helgason and Missions provided a copy of that same email stating the body, text, or verdict, except for a portion of a sentence. So what I'm trying to figure out is assuming that the allegation is that a majority vote of the council not taken place, we couldn't release it. That's a question that I have. You know, the attorney doesn't invoke the privilege. The client invokes the privilege, right? So was it waived when Mayor Reed said what she said on the radio? Was it waived when Mr. Friedman said what he said on the dais? So, you know, I find that interesting. That's coming across on here is, takes it right back down to the fact-finding. Why does this council majority seem so uninterested, they're willing to exercise the power to do this with less than 24 hours' notice? Okay? Less than 24 hours' notice on this resolution, and they're willing to exercise the power to do this. Not willing to exercise our ability to fact-find subpoenas for documents, subpoenas for testimony. Let's see where it goes. I'd love to see where it goes. I'm interested in finding out the facts. You know, one of the things that Mr. Friedman said over and over again about Mr. Helgason and myself, we're not attorneys. Neither is Chris Feraldi. Neither is Stephanie Reed. But they're the ones asserting that privilege wasn't waived. They aren't attorneys, right? So why is it whenever we say something, right, that's the response we get? And then, but then, on the other side of that, while Mr. Friedman has made those claims, right, you know, I also would say that we do have the ability to interpret laws because it's very clear that legislative bodies who make laws have the ability to interpret them. This is a mess when it comes to interpretation. You know, Chris Feraldi said just a moment ago, if Councilman Helgason and Missions agree in writing to attend a type of newly effective elective official training with a reputable Virginia Association within three months of adoption of its resolution, such as VML or Virginia First Cities, the fines above will be voided. He said it can be anything, anything. This doesn't say it can be anything, so there has to be a type of newly effective elective official training with a reputable Virginia Association, right? So arbitrarily, he just changes it. So, you know, again, I find that interesting. What we have here is very simple. You know, it's politics. This is purely political. It has nothing to do with policy. Politics are good for ratings for the news. Mr. Taylor mentioned that earlier. I was on WLNI this morning. They love it. They love it. I'm tired of it. But, you know, if we exercised our ability to find facts around here, right, if we actually investigated, I think a lot of people would be shocked what would come up in discovery, You know, it's easy for me to come up here and say what I say every time I'm here because I don't lie. Not a liar, I've never been. The mayor called me a liar a moment ago. I'll forgive her for that. She does it all the time, right? On January 9th of this year, sitting right up here between a work session and a meeting, she told me how important it was to get together with a third-party mediator we were both trying to work with to bury the hatchet on January 9th. I challenged her to tell me I'm lying because I can prove it. She said it. It's now August. There's phone calls. There's text messages. There's no interest in burying the hatchet. None. Hasn't happened. You know, notice I asked her earlier, what lie? She's not going to respond. But on January 9th, she told me she was going to do something, and I can prove it. And it hasn't happened. And it's because for nearly a year, I've been trying to bury the hatchet. But if the hatchet was buried, it wouldn't be good for ratings. So I would hope we consider the legal and ethical implications of this resolution. It's a really bad look for us to bar Councilman Helgason and myself from, and to erase performance I mean, erase performance evaluations. I guess the upside of erasing the performance evaluations is that they're no longer personnel records, no longer public records because they're just, so I guess I could just release them to the public, my portions. But I'll have to get some consultation on that. But, you know, this is just really, just a really bad precedent, erasing performance evaluations and saying, "We can't have a say." And you know what? I didn't think that we were supposed to talk about what happened in closed session. But Vice Mayor Feraldi just did. I didn't think we were supposed to talk about what happened in closed session, but Vice Mayor Feraldi just did. And because of that, I can't address or counter his claim because we're not supposed to talk
Who you haven't spoken to? Dr. Wilder?
Looking forward to the next session. Again, I just continue to pray for our community. As Councilman Taylor and Donlin was indicating, we have received so many comments from all over the country about the chaos in Lynchburg. Over the past almost two years now, you have seen a dysfunctional unit. And it hurts my heart to see, especially if you're from Lynchburg, if you love our community. I mean, someone just texted me, said they're leaving the city because they're just so embarrassed by what's going on. This is just, it's really sad to see people who have so many challenges and so many dysfunctions and can't get along, and they all love Jesus. And it's just so sad to see this happen. I support the motion because, again, I want to get back to some enormity as possible. And again, we must remember, I was in favor of someone doing evaluation on an attorney who you're currently suing. So that should not be permitted in the first place. But again, I was not voters that voted them in. So again, that's, again, I still don't think it's appropriate to be having someone doing an evaluation on someone you're currently suing, but that's another case. I do support the motion. I think we need to get back to, I'm praying that we can get back to some enormity. I'm praying that we can get back to working for our citizens. I'm praying because they focus on the issues that will affect our city and not all the other issues that are just beyond our realm of what we can do. Focus on the city and making Lynchburg a great place to live and work and play.
Councilman Helgason?
Thank you. Yeah, it's, I think the last resolution, or the last motion was pretty straightforward. The matter of due process. You know, I know the city attorney said, "Oh, well, we're having our due process by speaking." No, we're not. Had less than a day, you know, half a day to kind of review this resolution, had no ability to talk to legal counsel. And it's just a shame that you're going to say, "We're going to..." The folks that are up here are sworn to uphold the Constitution, uphold the fact of citizens' rights, to hold the fact of due process where you can actually present your case, you can have time to actually come up with a good argument. You know, it's, and I can appreciate the angst up here. You know, some folks thinking, "Oh, man, this is going on too long." Well, the issue is, if we would have just said, "Yes, we will defer this," where we can actually present, well, we're kind of in a catch-22. Well, hoping that we can actually defer the, this motion to where we can actually fulfill our due process, where we can actually meet with legal counsel, where we can actually see this resolution and come up with a presentation and a vigorous response to it by more than just a few hours, we would be just talking about where we could actually do that. And we could look at lots of these items that are in this resolution that are, that are really factually incorrect. These things are just vindictive. I mean, it's almost, you know, somewhat comical when somebody says, "Oh, we want you to apologize, but we're going to take somebody who has had, in my mind, I guess, an impeccable record of 20 years, and say, 'Oh, well, you are going to go to the back of the bus,' like that matters." I've heard on the radio the attacks that, "Oh, Jeff only wants to be mayor," or "Only wants this," or "He's misogynistic," or "He's sexist," or "He's racist," or all of these things. But I never respond to any of that. Because why? It's foolishness. I don't respond to it. I don't say, "Oh, no, no, I'm not." I don't say that I called you a naughty word like you had suggested for so long. I don't do these kind of things because it's not good for the city. And sadly, today hasn't been about coming together. Today has been about inflaming one side. You know, we have some folks that are like, "Yeah, Lynch 'em." Another side that says, "No." You know, and I just, it is pretty appalling, but it happens, and you can do what you want. You know, I would hope that there would be still some sanity that said, "You know, we got to pull some of these things." Because this isn't due process. This isn't, and I'm not saying this as I have been able to present a case. I haven't been able to meet with attorneys. I haven't been able to actually go through these items. I got it last night. And now to come forward that very few hours later to kind of come up with some kind of response, I don't think it's prudent. You know, the issue is, is this good? We're going to just take it and stomach it? Or is it going to go to another level? I mean, there's, what a waste. You know, what a waste of time. But, I mean, when you throw out things that are just rotten and factually incorrect, do you just sit there and take it? You know, we tried earlier, or I tried earlier, and I appreciate Councilmember Taylor saying, "Yeah." I mean, where there is real apologies, that was heartfelt. And I appreciate Chris saying that, you know, if it was genuine. The line was genuine. I've been genuine for 20 years. I haven't done things for my prestige or my power. If I would, I certainly wouldn't be sitting behind this dais, spending lots of time for no money, no benefits, no anything. I've been in the minority for almost 20 years, you know? And we finally get Republicans, and now I'm in the worst minority. Sad, you know? Councilmember Taylor said it correctly. We should do this prudently. We shouldn't just attack people publicly. We should give due process. It's just, we throw out these little allegations. We heard it, "Oh, well, they're defamed," or "Lies," or... Well, what? Nothing. When the question was asked, "Well, where was the defamation? Where were the lies?" Nothing. So I've appreciated what Abraham Lincoln said a long time ago, basically, I paraphrase it, that he said, "No man is smart enough to remember all his lies." So you tell the truth all the time. And so with that, been stating the truth for the last 20 years, I say the same thing that I say in private as I do in public. When I first ran 20 years ago, I said, "I'm going to look out for the taxpayers' wallet. I'm going to fight for the citizens to have the citizens or the city to live within its means." That's what I've done. I recognize this, you know, kind of thing as maybe a little more theater. I don't think it's a good, you know, it's almost like a public lynching just because you don't like somebody and maybe you can find something. you don't like somebody and maybe you can find something. But lots of these items, when you look at the fact of due process, there has not been any due process. I'm having to do this at the top of my head. Our city attorney has repeatedly said, I'm not an attorney. Do you think I've been able to get with an attorney before being presented this today?
So, the question is, Councilmember Helgason, is whether due process in a legislative censure session would entitle you to write to council constitutionally? And I don't think it would, sir. I think whether, what I think is...
But we can't evaluate his performance.
What I think is, is whether you are having an opportunity to respond to what's been presented to you.
Yeah.
And can you answer that?
And there's no way I can.
You are having an opportunity now to respond.
I'm having an opportunity to respond, but it's very short timeframe. We just now have the ability with the combined seven people, 30 minutes maximum. I just got this last night within several hours. We should be going line by line of what is factual and what is not. And I don't believe, especially when in here there are fines and seizing of people's property in this, in this resolution that says, we're going to fine you, we're going to do whatever. I recognize it's different, but my goodness, there is, I don't think the Constitution stops once we walk into that council chamber. Our citizens' rights aren't stopped just because they're in here. We have the right, the First Amendment, which was tried to be stopped by kicking out the right to the press. There are the rights of the citizens, and that same First Amendment was trying to be stopped by the rights of the citizens to peaceably assemble, told to get out, the rights of citizens, Councilmember Missions and I, to publicly have our free speech by saying what we think is very critical and open. Now, I don't know what other kind of apologies are needed, but this resolution isn't any good. That's why I suggested we table it so we can actually talk privately. Whether we can talk publicly, we've given apologies. Apparently, that isn't good enough because somebody will, you'll apologize for something only to say, well, I don't appreciate it, or I don't like it. Well, I am very, you know, I heard an apology by the mayor not long ago, that she apologized that the citizens had to witness her disorderly disruptive behavior. She didn't say about her, she said it was about us. We were sitting there, and we heard screaming going on up there, we heard chanting going on in the back, and we just, sitting there giving a professional presentation regardless of heckling. But then the apology wasn't for somebody's disorderly bad behavior. The county, the apology was for us, for what we did. So, I hope you will accept this apology that I gave earlier. I hope you will vote down this resolution. I hope that you will actually say, due process is critical, protecting citizens' rights are critical. I hope that you will ask for forgiveness, that you will actually work together for the good of the citizens, not just for your aggrandizement. I know some folks may have had PTSD from discussion of this. It shouldn't have, it should have been a two-minute discussion. It should have been a fact that we can just say, yeah, we're not bringing it up, we're going to talk privately, we're going to give people due process. I do hope that you will vote this down in the spirit of, and bear in mind that even if you vote this down, things are changing. If you vote for it, you got to live with your conscience. Vote it down, and I can vow to you that we are going to be working towards peace and harmony over this, rest of this session, and I hope you will vote it down today, and we will still move on, and it won't be lost, as the mayor and vice mayor has said, well, we want to teach a lesson. What are the lessons learned? It's almost watching like the Game of Thrones, where a public shaming, you know, maybe I should take off my shirt and put blood all over me and walk out and hit myself with the... So, anyway, hopefully that's done. Hopefully, you'll vote against this resolution, and I will pledge to you that I will be working, as Councilmember Taylor said, in the spirit of cooperation, in the spirit of openness, the spirit of coming together collegially for the benefit of the city, like I think I have done for the last 20 years. So, please vote against this resolution. Thank you.
All right. We'll go ahead and vote on the original motion.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Helgason?
No.
Councilmember Missions?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned. We will be reconvened at 4 o'clock for our work session. Thank you.